Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our Tuesday, February 6, 2024, Clay County Planning and Zoning Meeting. Have a few housekeeping rules, please. Tonight, we will hear four cases. We will begin with a report from the planning and zoning staff that will summarize each case prior to any discussion the board members may have. We will then ask the applicant to step up to the podium to ask or answer any questions and present support of their application. We ask the applicant to begin by stating their name and address for the record as these meetings are recorded. We will then ask for any public participation that may support the case being heard, and then anyone that may oppose the case being heard. Again, asking any participant to begin by stating their name and address. And please remember, the topic of discussion needs to remain pertinent to the case being heard. The purpose of the planning and zoning board is to hear the cases and make recommendations to the Clay County Commission. The commission will review and decide the cases heard tonight on February 15, 2024, at 6:00 PM in this room. Some cases will not go to the commission, so please confirm with P&amp;Z staff if your case will be or not be going to the commission. And could we begin tonight with a roll call of attendance?
I'm sorry, did you call for a roll call?
Could we begin tonight by the roll call of attendance?
Yes, sir. Terry Griffin.
Present.
David Rhodes.
Mike Brinkley.
Present.
Brad Scarlett.
Present.
Jerry Nolte.
Here.
Mark Beggs.
Present.
Randall Morris.
Present.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Present.
The next item on our agenda that happens every meeting in February is the election of a new chairperson and a election for a vice chair. And do we have any nominations for a chairperson?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Brad Scarlett for chairperson.
Very well. Do we have a second?
Second.
Very well. Could we have a roll call vote?
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Tom Decker.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Very well. Could we have a motion for the election of a vice chairperson, please?
I recommend Mark Beggs for vice chair.
Very well. Do we have a second?
Second.
Could we have a roll call vote?
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Tom Decker.
Yes.
And Mark Beggs.
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Okay, do I need to vacate my...
Yes, you are officially relieved of your duties.
Okay. Well, I'll see y'all next month then, so.
Do you want to just stay where you are? Is that a problem?
Oh, yeah. My preference would be that, yeah, you, we switch if we need to take a...
You don't need minutes. I gotta...
Yeah, take a couple of minutes. And then next month, we'll move. You don't have to move, Mark, but we'll move, we'll move you.
People will mix you up.
And while we have time, I will say, the first two cases, the Planning and Zoning Commission is the decision-making body. So these two cases will not go to County Commission unless they are appealed. There's a seven-day appeal period for opposition and a 30-day appeal period for the applicant after this process. But the last two cases on the agenda will be forwarded to the County Commission.
It's stinking.
Yeah, well, that's fine. Take your time, and we'll, once you're ready, we'll start with the minutes, and then we'll go into the first case after you take a vote on the minutes.
Have we done the minutes?
We have not, so we'll need to do the minutes.
Okay. Could we have a motion to approve the minutes of our October 3 meeting as presented? I'm sorry, December?
So moved.
Can we have a roll call vote?
Uh, we'll need a second on the motion.
Oh, we need a second?
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Tom Decker.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
And Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Abstain.
Motion carries.
The first case we will hear tonight is case number February 24-101 RZ/P. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman. I would like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
All right. So this is the proposed subdivision of Paradise Hills. Currently, the property sets at roughly 70 acres, zoned agricultural, has an existing house on it, and access from Quinn Road and 198th Street. The proposal is to split off 23 acres of the 70 and subdivide it into three lots. Lots 1 through 3 would be between 6 and 8 acres in zone residential ranchette, or R5. The rest of acreage will be left with the existing house on the property, and it meets the platting exemption because it contains more than 40 acres. Lots 1 through 3 will have an agricultural land preservation and have access from Quinn Road. Lot 1, in the purple there on the top of your screen, does have a blue line stream and floodplain on the property. This proposal falls under the natural resources tier of the 2008 Comprehensive Plan, which allows for one unit per 20 acres, or an exception to a 20-acre minimum being five-plus acres of the agricultural land preservation. So staff believes that this proposal is compliant with the 2008 Comprehensive Plan. Also on your screen there is our standard rezoning criteria we go through, we go over with all of our rezoning cases. They are attached to your staff report, and staff does believe that they do meet these criteria. This is the surrounding area. You can see in the yellow outline, that would be where the lots would go. To the north there, when it kind of gets away from the light-colored green, that's going to show your Clinton County line, along with the green and the swirl, I suppose, is that would be your Smithville Lake or Smithville Lake reservoir. You can kind of see also some other smaller lots in this area. Lots in this area range anywhere from 3 acres to about 30. And staff has received no opposition leading up to this planning and zoning meeting. With all of our cases, we publish in the newspaper, we post a rezoning sign-out on site, and send letters with the, with any property within 1,000 feet. In this case, we sent a total of 15. We have received no objections from outside agencies, and they have given their approval. Staff is recommending approval with one condition, and that includes changes to recording copies of the plat. Staff would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners might have, and the applicant is present.
Does the board have any questions for staff? That's it? Thank you. Would the applicant please step forward and state your name and address?
Fred Walter, for Eldon Walter, address 19522 Quinn Road, Tremble, Missouri, 64492.
Do you have anything to present to support your application tonight?
Other than what I've given to the staff?
Okay. Do you understand the staff's report?
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Does the board have any questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the public participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? No one in the audience? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? There's no one in the audience. Does the board have any comments, concerns? Can I have a motion for the case being heard for the rezoning?
Mr. Chairman, I'll recommend approval of the rezoning from agricultural ag district to residential ranchette R5 district, with agricultural land preservation overlay district be approved.
Very well. Do we have a second?
A little second.
I'd like to call for a roll call vote?
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Tom Decker.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
And Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can we roll straight into the preliminary plat approval?
Yes, with condition.
With condition. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat of Paradise Hills Estates with the condition attached to set out in Exhibit A.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote?
Tom Decker.
Yes, with conditions.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
And Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The second case tonight is case number February 24-102F. It's the final plat for Paradise Hills Estate. Can we have the staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman. I'd like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
Yes.
So, yeah, this is the final plat for Paradise Hills Estates. Staff believes that the final plat is compliant with the approved preliminary plat, and it meets Section 151-3.6D of the 2011 Land Development Code, and staff is recommending approval with the one condition. Staff would be happy to answer any questions commissioners might have, and the applicant is present.
Does anyone on the board have any questions or concerns?
No.
Thank you. Would the applicant please step forward, state your name and address again?
Fred Walter, on behalf of Eldon Walter, address 19522 Quinn Road, Tremble, Missouri, 64492.
And the same questions. Do you have anything to present to support your application tonight?
Other than what I've given to staff.
Do you understand the staff's report?
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
No.
All right. Thank you. Does the board have any questions for the applicant? I apologize.
No.
No? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? There's no one in the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? Again, there's nobody in the audience. Does the board have any comments or concerns at this time? Can I have a motion for the case being heard?
I would make a motion to approve the final plat of Paradise Hills Estates with the condition attached to under Exhibit A.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Very well. Can we have a roll call vote?
Tom Decker.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
And Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Motion carries, and that, this case will not go to County Commission. If anybody listening has questions, they would need to contact the Planning and Zoning Department.
Thank you. The next case to be heard is case number February 24-103A. This is an administrative case, the official zoning map 2023. Please proceed, Shane.
Yes, Chairman. I'd like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
Yes.
All right. So this is a 2023 zoning map. This is a standard case that we do each year. Last updated zoning map was approved on the 15th of February of last year. The map is published on the county's website, and as well as a paper copy that is at the Planning and Zoning's office. The recommendation is for the approval of the 2023 zoning map. Again, the big thing about these maps is it shows all the updated zonings throughout this past year, along with any updated annexations from other cities and such. And there's kind of a small version of what that map looks like. Staff would be happy to answer any questions commissioners may have, and we're here.
Does anyone on the board have any questions or concerns?
I'd have a question. Shane, were there any significant annexations from the surrounding municipalities, or Carney, Smithville, Excelsior?
Not that I can, not that I can think of. I would expect some this coming year, though.
Yeah, and I assume it was last year, but the biggest one would be the Liberty, the Montage Development, which is about 112th and Plattsburg, between Plattsburg and A Highway. They annexed some unincorporated land to go with some Hallmark land, and then part of their other industrial development on the other side of 35, kind of along that outer road of Petty, was annexed into Liberty. Those are the two biggest that I can think of, and we did get notified of Smithville annexing a larger parcel at 144th and Mount Olivet, but that won't be shown in this map because it just happened in January.
So the county or P&amp;Z, they don't ever have any input where we've got to call on municipalities if we're within one mile or whatever?
So we reach out, if we have a case that's within a mile and a half of a city, we reach out to that city to be a good neighbor and get their input. But honestly, Planning and Zoning is one of the last departments to know about an annexation.
That the city...
That the city has annexed in.
Yeah.
Now, we, like the one at 144th and Mount Olivet, we knew, our recommendation was that they annex in because they wanted to do an interior street subdivision. So sometimes we become aware of those, but other times, it's way after the fact.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns?
No.
And we have nobody in the audience, but I'm going to ask anyone, is, anyway, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment that supports or opposes? There's no one in the audience. Can I have a motion for the case being heard?
Yeah, I'd make a motion for the approval of the official zoning map 2023 edition.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Can we have a vote, please?
Tom Decker.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
And Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Motion carries, and this will be forwarded to the County Commission on February 15.
The last thing on the list is the surrounding land use and zoning. Is that what we're going to discuss now?
Yeah, the land of, land development.
Yes.
So I would like to add the staff report as part of the official record, please?
Yes.
So we talked in December about the swimming pool and spa code out of the Land Development Code. So I want to give you a little background information, and they kind of go over what we put in the staff report. But, so, right now, the Clay County, the unincorporated sections are on the 2012 version of the building codes. However, we have not adopted the 2012 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code. So it's just the, the five versions that you can see on the, it's the IBC, IRC, IPC, IMC, and IFC. The 2012 code requires a fence around a pool, does not allow for a pool cover in lieu of a fence. However, if we had adopted the specific swimming pool code, the swimming pool code does allow for a powered safety cover in lieu of a fence. And if you look at the 2018 code, which we are working on updating our code within the next year or so, and we'll either go to the 18 or 21 version, the 18 version of the International Residential Code refers to the swimming pool code, which again allows a, for a powered safety cover that meets certain specs instead of a fence. So we did some research on the local jurisdictions, and it's kind of split half and half. You can see Liberty, Carney, Clinton County, and Ray County all require a fence, whereas Smithville, Excelsior, and Platt will allow you to do a pool cover that meets those standards instead of a fence. So it's kind of split right down the middle with local jurisdictions. Our current text out of the Land Development Code, again, that's what we're using, the Land Development Code and the IRC, it requires a four-foot-tall fence with self-latching gates, and does not allow a pool cover instead of a fence. So what staff did in the staff report is, we gave three options. Now, you don't have to choose from these three options. You could come up with a different option. So Option A, we're proposing, right now, the code says self-latching gates. Everything we're reading on gates for fences around pools should be self-latching and self-closing, which means they would be spring-loaded, basically. So we're proposing self-latching and self-closing gates, or a powered safety cover, which complies with the ASTM standards. We did put a few of the ASTM standards in the staff report, so you could see those, but it has to, basically, that standard, that cover has to go through a series of tests, has to hold a certain amount of weight, has to drain water in a certain amount, period of time. When there is a certain amount of weight on the cover, there can't be so much deflection on the side of the pool that somebody could slip in the side underneath the cover. So it goes through a pretty set, standard set of tests that that pool cover has to pass, and this seems to be the industry standard for these pool covers. So again, this one would allow the pool cover, but it would also, you can see in number 7, if a door or window opens into that pool area, this version of the code would require an alarm on that door or window. So if it's open, it makes an audible alarm that meets this certain standard out of the building code. So parents know if, if the kid opens the door, they know that door's been opened, and they need to check and make sure either the cover's on or the, the child isn't going outside. So again, this allows for the cover, but requires that alarm. Second version is a self-latching and self-closing gate, no pool cover in lieu of that fence. So you'd have to do the fence, and then same thing where if you have that window or door that opens into the pool area, you have to have that alarm. That's Option B. That's what staff is making the recommendation for. Option C would be a fence, self-latching, self-closing, or that powered safety cover again. And then this one talks about hot tubs and spas enclosed by a fence or wall. The reason we separated that out is we're not requiring, if it's a hot tub or spa, for it to be a powered safety cover. Obviously, those are much smaller. A manual cover would be allowed as long as it meets the ASTM standards. And this one, this version of the code does not require the alarm walking in if it has a door or window that accesses that pool area. So those are the three options that we came up with. We did include some drowning statistics in your packet. We gave some barrier guidance as well that came from the federal government, I believe. So again, those are our three, three options. Staff is recommending the second one, which is not allowing the pool cover, but staff is happy to enforce whatever the Planning and Zoning Commission and County Commission decide to adopt. And I would be happy to answer any questions that the board members may have.
I have a question. So in all three of these hot tubs and spas are required to be enclosed by a fence or a wall?
So in the first one, which allows a cover, it, it could be a fence or wall, or it could be a cover.
Okay.
The pool cover has to be powered. The spa or hot tub cover could be manual. Second one is fence-only, no covers. Third one is same thing. It's the covers are required, powered again for a pool, not powered for the hot tub or spa, but this third one does not require that safety alarm.
So let me back up just a minute. So Option A, you said required a powered. I don't see that. I see it says an outdoor swimming pool must have a powered safety cover, but number 2, under Option A, it just says fence wall or self-closing gates with, oh, safety cover. It just says with a safety cover.
Safety cover, but not powered safety cover.
Right. So number, I thought you said the difference between A and C was that C didn't require a powered cover over the hot tub?
No. C does not require the alarm on the door.
Okay.
So there, A and C are exactly the same, except number 7 does not exist in C.
Got it. Okay. Thanks.
So with the, with the alarms, so anything, anything that would be where the house would be, the fence would be outside the house. So any door, window that was below 48 inches, is that correct?
Correct.
So any egress window, any, any kind of opening window at all would have to have this alarm.
That empties into the pool area that's not separated by that, another four foot.
So the back of your house was, was looking at the pool and had direct access. So any window or door that went to that would have to have this. So any window or door that went to that would have to have this audible alarm on. So if they had 10 windows or 10 doors, they would have that, 10 individual alarms?
If they open into the pool and you adopt that version, yes.
So, just to expound on that, if they did the cover, they did not have a fence. That, does that mean any window in the entire house? Because it would all have access to the pool area.
Then you wouldn't-
No, it doesn't have a fence that's directing people into that, but if it's all open and you just had a powered cover,
Well, then you would-
What do you require?
Well-
So you're saying any window that has direct access to the pool has to have an alarm? That's kind of assuming there's a fence delineating that, but if you just have a cover, I mean, what do you call them, direct access?
Well, then you wouldn't, if you, if you don't want to require that, then you would adopt option C.
Well, no, I think, I think it's a good idea, but I just don't want us to get into, into predicament where they have to put an alarm on the front of the house.
But all three, all three of these options, though, require a fence. Do they not?
No.
No, the, the option C, option A and C do not require a fence, you could choose to do the, the cover.
Yes, fence or safety cover.
Okay.
Yeah. So, are you going to require alarms on all windows?
So, so the question would be, it says provide direct access, and we took that straight from other codes. So I, there is-
Are you going to define that, direct access?
Well, yeah, we, that's what we do.
It says in the code, it does say-
Yeah, yes. Yes, and that's what we do. We live in the gray area.
It's that vague about, so, so I thought about this too. What happens if you have a door on the side of the house?
Right.
That you could just walk around the house and like do it?
Exactly, yeah, that's what I was getting-
It's so vague that it just, I don't know how they-
And so then, in, in that situation, my, so, if you allow the cover and require the alarm, let's say, the building inspector, when he does a final inspection, is going to see no fence. So if he sees no fence, then he's going to have to see that that cover is ASTM certified, and then he's going to look at the windows and doors that open into that area, and just like he does with the building code on a daily basis, he's going to make a judgment call. And if, if the homeowner doesn't agree with that judgment call, there's an appeal process where they could appeal that to the Building Codes Commission. So it's no different than if he makes a judgment call on smoke detectors, or whatever that may be. There's an appeal process.
Well, I'd like to see if, if we're going to go with that option, I think direct access needs to be defined, so that your inspector doesn't have to make a call, and a homeowner isn't tearing up a wall trying to run alarm wires to windows that he didn't think had, had to have an alarm on it. So I'd say, you know, direct access means windows and doors on the same elevation as, you know, the side of the pool, or something limiting that, because I know a very zealous inspector that wants to cover their backside may want you to do everything.
Okay, and we, we could amend it to add additional language, for sure.
Maybe you just need to define that a little better.
And, and maybe we need to have the discussion first among the board of who is in favor of the covers. I personally am not. I spent 25 years in insurance claims, handling liability claims. I'm not a big fan of the covers merely because somebody will go out, open it, then they go inside to fix lunch, they're leaving the pool exposed during that time. They're not getting out of the pool, closing the cover, going in the house, bringing the food out, coming back out, opening the cover. So there's always going to be a time when the covers are not on the pool. So I'm not a big fan of those. That's, that's my position. I would like to see us recommend one of these that does not allow for the cover, in my personal opinion.
I kind of like to stay in line with the National Code where they do allow a cover. Uh, it's tested, proven, um, the way the cover is done, the way the control unit that it's done. And then what, any fence or anything like that fall on the insurance company to? Because everybody's insurance company's different, you know? Some insurance companies, no matter what, acquire a fence, and some don't. And, uh, it's just a, I understand inside a lot where there's a lot of people, um, you know, subdivision, but when you're out on acreage or something, I still think you should have the opportunity to, to choose the cover, which is a national standard, and you choose that cover.
And, and we didn't go the acreage route because it didn't seem like that gained any traction, but you could consider that, of if it's over a certain acreage, then a cover is allowed. If it's under a certain acreage, you could do that. We didn't do that because we didn't discuss that much last month, but that could be a possibility as well.
Well, my point of view, I'm always in favor of giving them, giving the residents as much freedom as they want, but with that freedom also comes responsibility. So, if you elect to go with a cover with no fence, then it's kind of on you to make sure you keep your pool safe. And so, an insurance company or not, I mean, you're talking more dollars, and I'd be talking more like responsibly for someone dying in their pool. You know, the dollars are kind of insignificant when you've got a, you know, fatality because you didn't close the cover. So, that's kind of where my, where I'm coming from. I, I like to give them as much choice as they can, uh, but everybody has to understand that comes with responsibility as well.
I, I like giving them the choice as well, which is why I don't like the alarm system. Uh, I, first of all, don't think it will be effective. Uh, nobody is going to want to hear an alarm go off every time somebody goes out a door, uh, particularly if, uh, it requires every door to be alarmed. Um, they'll turn the alarm off. I, I just think it would be an ineffective extra expense added to the homeowners that's not actually going to, uh, uh, provide any reasonable safety.
Do we know the numbers, uh, because we had numbers here, do we have numbers for Clay County in particular? I don't, I didn't know if I saw those or not, I may have missed those.
Numbers as far as?
For fatalities or groundings from?
No, we did not. I don't have numbers for Clay County. We could, we could try to research that and see if the Health Department has some numbers, and bring that back to you at next month's meeting if you, if you choose to continue this.
Well, I'm not saying that, you know, one child, you know, fatality of one child is not significant because it is, but I'm just wanting to kind of give an idea of what the scope of the problem is. And, kind of on that, I, I wonder how, you know, I think what we need to be looking at is what is the most effective? So, if there's a, if there's a political subdivision that has, um, just fences, how effective is that as opposed to covers, as opposed to both? So I mean, um, it would be good to know the practicalities of it, and what actually is working? Because, you know, we all want to be safe, but, I mean, when you're talking about something like a hot, a hot tub with a cover on it, I mean, unless you just really, really enjoy paying high utility bills, you want that cover on there almost, uh, at every moment that you're not using it directly. So, I, I was just kind of curious about that.
I, I'd done some research, it's probably been a couple of years ago, on fatalities on, I can't remember the age, but it was like under 10, pools were number one. But it was, I didn't really specify, I think it's just kids in, swimming in pools getting in trouble. And it was like, I would say it was, the number was like four or 500 children, uh, in that year. But that was the number one fatality for children, yeah.
I was just wondering if there might be some kind of a pattern where, say, out of those, say, for every hundred that drowned, if 75 of them are, you know, because there's a lack of a cover or a lack of a fence, so you kind of say, okay, here's the most effective, uh, regulation to protect, you know, kids, basically.
I think for me, it falls back on, we're talking about liability and everything, it just kind of falls back on the building code, you know? And they, they say the cover is okay, so you can be following that code, and kind of staying in line with that. And, and that's what I'd like to do. I mean, you start nicking and dashing, hoping you hold it, and then, I mean, where do you get at the end of the day? I mean, you get another board group that comes in, and they change their mind. If you're following the code, then, then it's pretty much, you know, and that's what we try to do with everything. I mean, it's a standard. And, uh, nothing's perfect, there's nothing going to save everybody. And we know that, everybody here knows that. And, uh, but that's, I'd just like to stay in line with the, with the pool code and, and that sort of thing. So, that's just my opinion.
I, I think that's right, though, because by staying with a, a, an already vetted code, certainly you, it, there, there's some validity to something that has been established and, and hopefully is effective. But if we have a choice, I just, whatever's the most effective code out there is probably the way we should be at least looking anyway, if not acting.
And, and I, I should add, so the 2018 code aligns with the one I have on the screen now, option A. It does require the alarm, but it gives a second, it gives a, um, second, uh, option for the alarm. It, it gives some really gray, and I don't have it in front of me, but allows the jurisdiction to approve other means rather than the alarm going on the doors that exit into the pool area, whether it be additional locks, or basically it says if, if you can, for lack of a better term, beef up, or do something that the, the jurisdiction would agree to, rather than the alarms, then that's okay as well. I did not include that because it was really, I did not want any part of trying to enforce that.
Is the alarm that they require, would it, would a typical door alarm that's on most, or any house has an alarm, that just says, hey, says door open, is it something beyond that?
It, it is. So I, when I was in New Mexico, uh, in Rio Rancho, they had this, they, uh, required the alarms, and it's a, to, I think it was Mr. Morris, uh, it's a very, it's a loud alarm. It's more than just a chime.
Maybe we should require biometric locks so that only, uh, adults with, uh, eye scans can get out the doors.
I was looking into that, yes.
Yeah. My, my point is, is facetious, but it's, it, we can go, I think, too far in trying to secure an area. And I would rather, um, we, uh, leave some latitude for parents to take responsibility.
And I, and I, to that comment, I think that's different when it is the house where typically it would be people that you know that you have invited into your home, or your own family, your own children having access to the swimming pool, whereas the cover and the fence are typically designed to keep third parties-
I'm, I'm happy with cover and fence issues. I, I mean, I, I have no qualms with making a decision.
No, I was agreeing with you. I think the alarm system might be a little overkill. I would also agree that if that's the code, then our decision is, is do we separate from the code at that point?
Well, something else that I wonder about is that, I mean, it's a little bit like, um, on your prescription medicines, the child cap. It's like, we don't have children in our house, uh, so I mean, we, we don't have them. If you've got an individual who owns a, a, a house out in the, in the unincorporated areas, and they don't have children, they don't have people come over with children, if, if, you know, where we're, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, I'm just saying that's another, you know, thought. Are we going to really require someone to do something they don't need, although, you know, that, I, I don't know the answer to that right off, I'm a little inclined to, you know, give people attitude, but on the other hand, what you as staff need from us is clear and direct, um, direction, and you need to have something that is enforceable. So it's, I mean, whatever we give you, you folks to enforce has to be specific. It has to be egress, uh, you know, door or window, this, with this definition, whether it's distance, whether it's whatever. So I, I think that's, to me, that's one of the things that crosses my mind, is to make sure that the direction we ask you folks to go out there and force as far as codes enforcement go and inspections is something that, 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 uh, that gives you guys clarity to work with.
And I think one of the biggest ones that we're going to find is the hot tubs and spas, where you do have a cover that goes on your hot tub, but there's an awful lot of those that are just sitting on a deck or in a backyard, and there is no fence at all. So I think that's probably, we're going to find a lot more areas where a hot tub is sitting on the back porch, and there is no fence in the yard today, whereas with this requirement, if you buy a hot tub and they deliver it and put it on the slab, you're going to have to now fence off at least that area, so.
Well, and that, so just to that point, technically, the current code requires a fence or wall around a hot tub. But again, as I think I stated last year, two months ago, I don't recall us ever issuing a permit on a spa or hot tub, or having a code violation of a spa and hot tub not surrounded by a fence. But, but, yeah, I'm sure there's many that, that we're not aware of, for sure.
That, that was kind of my point, is I don't think people are getting permits when they go buy a hot tub. So is, is there a consensus here, one, on whether we should stay with the general code? Or whether we should vary from that code? Maybe that's a good place to start.
Well, I, just like I said before, I'd say that what I think the National Code is, that's what we follow with every other policy that, um, buildings, so it simplifies that as the National Code, following the National Pool Code, and, and, uh, that's, I think that's the- And if the audio part is in that, then that's part of it, and it has to be, but like Mark said, we got to make sure that we, the terminology is understandable, when we don't get a bunch of people wanting that. And it's got to be, that terminology has to be streamlined and structured.
Mike, the code that you're talking about is it the 2018, the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code?
Yeah.
Yeah. That gives the, either a fence or approved cover?
And I looked up the 2000, I think it's the 2012, uh, IBC, and, uh, it had some pool stuff in there, and it, it mentioned that the automatic pool cover was, and the lockable cover for the spa in lieu of a, a fence. And it was in that part, so.
Well, I'd, I'd be in favor of staying with the code, I just think there's, you know, those people are focused on pool, and so I'm assuming they're doing all the research on the back end of that to make sure they're making the right recommendations. So I think there's no reason to reinvent the wheel, so I'm, I'm kind of in favor of that, sticking with that.
Does that code require the alarm for a pool or a hot tub?
Yes, the international, 2018 International-
So, everybody who buys a hot tub, because a hot tub-
But you don't have to, so counties, when they adopt the building code, can exempt out certain sections. So not every city or county has, if, if they allow a, um, pool cover, doesn't mean that they, uh, or even a fence, it doesn't mean that they require the alarm.
Well, well, option A requires it whether or not you have a pool cover or a fence. It just says in situations where a door's, uh, that has direct access to a pool, hot tub, or spa. And my guess is everybody's hot tub is going to have a door, direct access to it.
Correct.
Everybody's hot tub is going to have to be wired for an alarm. I think that's ridiculous.
We could make an exception and say in-ground hot tubs and spas, which I think makes more sense with the theory of the swimming pool, rather than an above-ground hot tub that has a cover on it.
I just jumped online, looked at UL 2017 alarms. They're, some of these look like just standalone, like something that sticks on the wall, so. Which to me, which to me would tell me they'd probably turn them off.
And I looked them up on, on Amazon, and there's, they're inexpensive, but I could never find one that actually said that it was 2017 approved. They, you could do a search for it on Amazon, but I never did actually see it in the writing where it said that, because I think the self-adhesive ones are not, but they need to be screwed to the, to the door, the frame of the window to become compliant.
Yeah, the ones I'm looking at, yeah, I went to Amazon, there was, it threw up a bunch, but nothing said UL 2017. So I went back out, there are a few here. I don't know if these, these may screw on, I don't know. They just look like a little box that gets attached, so I don't know how the attachment is, but.
So, if you're, so if you're, you're having a pool party, and you've got the alarms on, the, 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 the audio alarms on there, you've got a lot of folks there, so every, you know, you want to keep the door shut because of the air conditioning, so every couple of minutes, this alarm's going to be blaring at you, that seems a little-
Yeah, I think that's, I'm with you on that, I can see that being problematic. And people just turning them off.
People will just turn them off, they just, they just plug them or they wire them up. I would, I would, quite honestly, I, that would be something that would, uh, not be uncommon, I think.
And so I would offer, i- if you want to continue the case, you could each individually email me what your preference is, because it seems like we've got several different points of view. And then I could work with the county attorney on compiling those, coming up with some new language, and trying to, uh, come up with a, the compromise between those emails. emails. That's just, don't have to do it that way, it's just a suggestion.
Now, option C, it's basically everything but the, the alarm, right?
Option C is?
It doesn't allow a pool cover.
It allows a pool, it allows a pool, so for the pool, it, it, you can do a fence or a powered safety cover. For hot tubs and spas, you can do the fence.
Yeah, it does, sorry.
Or a, doesn't have to be a powered safety cover.
Right, it just has to be an ASTM 2046 approved cover.
But it does not require any of the alarming.
Right.
So can I have a motion to continue this until next month's meeting?
So move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Uh, Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Tara Griffin.
Yes.
Tom Decker.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Just remember, some laws, you have to copy each other. You don't discuss outside in public meetings, but individually, you have to copy any opinion of it, and then we will come up with suggested options in the language and bring it back to court.
Very well. Do we have anything else?
I've, I've got one quick question. So our current code, does it incorporate the swimming pool code?
The two, we have not, we did not adopt the 2012 pool code.
Okay.
We're going off the 2012 IRC.
Okay.
Which is fence.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I have one more item, I, if the commission will divulge me a little bit, I, I want to give you an update on the comprehensive plan, so, and I apologize to Commissioner Nolte, you've seen this before. So just a brief history, I know you're all aware, and some of you were, were involved in the early meetings, but again, first comp plan for the county was 1997, we're on our 2008 plan now, that is the, the version that is getting updated or redone. Unique thing about the comp plan is this body will vote to adopt the comprehensive plan. The county commission is just an advisory board for the comp plan, so this will come in front of you hopefully later this year. So to give you an update on what we've done so far, we, we contracted with Olson Studio as our consultant, we've done kickoff meetings with the county commission, the planning zoning commission, we created a citizen stakeholder committee, which has about 35 to 40 citizens, you can see that picture in the top right, is from the meeting that had the citizen stakeholder committee involved. We've also included every city within Clay County. As part of those meetings, we've done a, I, I think Olson's done really, a really good job with public participation. They were at all the fall festivals, Liberty Fall Festival, Glad Fest, Halloween in the Park in North Kansas City last fall, they also went to Jesse James Festival, we had a two-day, a two-day planning shiret with the cities, the citizen stakeholder committee and county staff. There were two public open houses, one in Excelsior Springs, one in Gladstone, and then there were five or six focus groups, which included a couple HOAs in unincorporated Clay, a couple geography classes in Carney High School, a senior citizen group, a small business owner, a group that owned businesses in unincorporated Clay, and a farmers or environmental group that was one of the focus groups. They also did additional outreach, outreach. We've reached out to the school districts, they've reached out to the water districts, the fire districts. We sent a postcard to every unincorporated parcel that has a house on it, notifying them that we're updating the comp plan. There was a survey that was on the Clay County Compass website, so there was a, quite a bit of outreach. Process, we've started the process, and we've pretty much done the public participation. Now there will be, once we have a draft plan, there will be additional public comment, including a, a virtual public house as well, open house. And the next step, and the reason I wanted to give, kind of go over this with you tonight, is Olson is working on a draft plan. That draft plan will be presented to the planning and zoning commission and county commission in a combined meeting. I don't have a date for that yet, but look for an email from us, we're probably looking April, May, this spring. So they'll take input from the planning zoning commission, county commission, county staff. That draft plan will include goals and strategies, and then it'll go out for a public comment as well. They will take all that public comment, revise the plan, and create an action plan. That action plan is more for P and Z staff, because it's how do we implement the new comp plan once it's adopted? And then it'll come back to county commission and the planning and zoning commission for adoption. So those are the steps we're going through, we're shooting for fall of this year to adopt And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but like I said, we'll keep you updated and you'll be part of that draft plan process, but just wanted to give you a brief update of where we are, because that's a pretty big project that's going on.
Thank you, Kip. Anything else?
I don't think so. Shane, do we have anything else?
Any legal issues? Call for adjournment. Do we have to have a vote on that?
No, I'm used to adjournments.
Nope, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Not used to that power.
He's got kind of a shudder, doesn't he?